It's 5:30. I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you would stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone. Welcome everyone who's watching from home. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Present.
Trustee Gett?
Present.
Trustee Kazam?
Present.
Trustee Reichert? Trustee Wigginton?
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Present.
All right, everyone's here. Welcome again. Next is approval of the minutes from the Board of Trustees, meeting October 1st, 2024. I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
They're moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes, discussion on the motion? Hearing that, all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. No official correspondence, but we were copied on an email, I believe, over the weekend about a crossing on Forest Park Drive where Pima Toy Trail enters Forest Park Drive. So I've got counsel looking into that along with Administrator Sutton. So I think we can do something, obviously we can do something, but how extensive it will be going to be up to counsel and the administrator. So you have any comment on that, Dustin?
No, I think received a letter and we'll have some dialogue and find out what's the best option.
Okay, we would be at comments from the audience on agenda items only. If you'd like to address the board on any of the agenda items, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and try and keep your remarks under five minutes. Any comments from the audience? Welcome.
Hi, my name is Stephen Cook. I'm here tonight representing the Peoria Heights Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to address a little bit of a meeting we had previously where we talked about the taste and the profitability of the taste. What we're doing as a chamber to make that better. Just wanted to give you guys a quick summary. We over-tripled our profit margins this year for the Taste of the Heights due to increases in vendors, sponsorships, and some of the new areas that we brought in. Our continued partnership with the village has led to the overwhelming success of these events for local business owners as well as residents. Excuse me, I'm a little under the weather today. To that end, we are very excited to be bringing a couple weekends this holiday season, full of fun and different events, especially around the Kris Kringle Market this December. One last thing that I wanted to make sure I said is Director Aldrich helped us tremendously with a grant for our COVID relief. We really could not have done it without you. Thank you very much. We're going to be using this money to help put on more events, hopefully next year, as well as make the events that we have currently much bigger events. Hopefully that will drive more membership, both with residents and new business members into our area. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. I appreciate the update. Any questions?
I just had a question. What is the date of the Kringle Market?
I'm not sure. I think it's the two, first two weekends in December.
Okay.
I believe. I'm not on that committee, so I don't know.
That's fine. It's going to go be two weekends, though?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're extending it to two weekends this year. We got a lot of feedback from residents that they wanted more, and same with vendors. They wanted it to have a little bit more oomph. And since the Peoria Kringle Market, or their version of it down on the riverfront, goes two weekends, we thought that we would go ahead and try that as well. We are going to continue with not charging anybody to enter our Kringle Market, which is different than everyone else's as well. So we're doing this more as a public service kind of thing, help out some of our local vendors, and also just have a fun event for our, for our public.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I didn't mean to skip over this great news of tripling your profit for the Taste.
Yes, thank you.
That's really remarkable, and I applaud you for doing that in the entire chamber.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else here on agenda items? Public comment going once, twice? Public comments closed. Will you be at old business? Any old business to come before the board?
I do?
Yes.
I was wondering if we could, I don't know if you can answer this, Ms. Ben, do you, is there any update on where the fire department is at with hiring any new staff?
Sure. So we have six new members in our pool right now. Either they have been, you know, officially brought on with being fitted for gear and everything. I have two members out with getting their physicals and stuff. I'm waiting to hear back from them. But total, we brought back, brought in four in the last month, and we have two that I'm still waiting on physical support. So six total.
Are those going to be volunteers or those part-time staff?
Four volunteer, two will be on stipends.
Okay, and then also, can you provide the board with an update from the structure fire that happened on Saturday? Because there has been a notice put out on social media, but as far as I'm under the impression, no one on this board has received an update on that.
Okay, yeah, so at 6:18 in the morning, we were dispatched to a fire that was happening on our structure in the roof. Within four minutes, we had one rig on scene with three members on it, and within 15 minutes, the fire was placed under control. So in a total of seven minutes, we had two apparatus with four members from our department on scene with water on the fire.
Say that last part again.
Within seven minutes, we had two apparatus from our department on scene with water on the fire.
Okay, and we had mutual response on that as well?
Yes, Peoria, Bartonville, West Peoria, and Dunlap.
And we held command on the lead of the fire, too?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for being here. I have requested that someone be here, so I appreciate your effort in being here and being able to answer my questions like to the best of your ability.
Sure, I'm here every Tuesday.
Thank you.
Any other old business? Okay, we have a pretty long agenda, so let's get right into new business. The first four items are under administration. The first item, ordinance 2024-1738, an ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter II of the Village Code of the Village of Peoria Heights for the purpose of increasing the permitted number of video gaming establishment licenses. Trustee DeVore, I'd ask for a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-1738.
Second. All right, go ahead, Trustee DeVore.
So Sam Heppard with Clink is requesting to be able to have video gaming put into the Clink Bar Restaurant area. I did reach out to him today because I had some questions from some of you on some things maybe that they would be doing. So the questions I did ask were, how many units was he planning on putting in? And he was saying around four. And then I also asked what his plan was for advertisement, because my fear was, is there going to be something like floating off that balcony? One, Heritage Square doesn't allow that kind of signage as it is, period. But Sam was telling me that he did not intend to advertise for them at all. It's just that they have a little bit of empty space inside of the establishment that could use it, and it would be a way to help supplement some of like the winter income loss. But he is not planning on advertising for it at all.
I see Sam in the audience tonight. Hi, Sam. There isn't like a diagram or description of where the games would be located. Can you speak to that? Do you mind? That would be great. Thank you.
Evening, everyone. Thanks for, you know, taking this matter. Yeah, so if you've ever been in there before, we've got this little room off to the side. It was where they made wine before, so it's kind of an enclosed space. And I always envisioned something like that would go in there, kind of private. I don't really foresee this being like a huge part of our business. I don't even, I'm not even going to advertise it in the business. It's just to, a little bit of supplemental income for when, you know, definitely last winter was eye-opening to us. And so I think it will help us just a little bit month to month. So that's kind of just what this is. It's not a deal breaker either way, but I think it would just help out a little bit, you know, a little bit of a hedge for lower general business, so.
Thank you. I appreciate, appreciate you asking, and Sam, you answering the questions about signage. I think that's been part of a conversation, ongoing conversation that we've been having up here, particularly regarding the ACE corridor. So I'm happy to hear that there will not be.
Yeah, we won't even have any signage in the restaurant.
Okay.
Advertising it at all either. So there won't be anything inside or outside, so.
As far as the, I know what room you're talking about, that's a glassed-off room, right?
Yep.
Will you tint the glass? Is that the plan?
The glass is currently tinted. We tinted that from day one.
Okay.
Currently, we have like a lot of our refrigeration in there, stuff like that. And so when that light comes on, it doesn't look great from inside the restaurant anyway, so we tinted that all up. And so that will stay tinted. We're trying to keep it as low-key as possible so it's not a glaring casino-like feel, is what I was going for.
Okay, great.
Anyone else? I appreciate the questions. Just a clarification, though. This is to increase the number of licenses. My intent is to give the license to Clink. Am I right on that, counsel?
You are, just like liquor licenses. The board approves the number of available licenses, and the mayor awards those licenses to applicants, so.
That is my intent. Anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Thanks, Sam, for all you do for the village.
Thanks, Cass. Appreciate it.
All right, ordinance 2024-1739, an ordinance abating special service area number one taxes for the year 2024 to pay debt service on taxable general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 2022 of the Village of Peoria Heights. Trustee DeVore, ask for motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-1739.
Second. All right, go ahead, Trustee DeVore.
Okay, so these next two items kind of, they just go together. So if you remember, this is something we do every year for the bonds that we have out for Treskers. So as long as they have the money in the account to cover the bonds, then we can abate the taxes in their responsibility. So that is what these next two ordinances are about.
Well, explained. Thank you. Questions?
So at our last meeting, one of the things that I discussed was how do we define special service area number one now that those PIN numbers don't exist? How are we doing on that?
I haven't looked at the legal description, but the ordinance does have a legal description for the special service area, even though it lists PINs. It also has a legal description and legal description controls. So when, when certain PINs are abated and new PIN numbers issued because of a split, or as long as a lot that wasn't in the special service area isn't connected to a lot that is, then the PIN numbers really are not going to impact the overall area. So it's the same legal description. Those lots, when the PIN numbers change, doesn't take it in or leave it out of the special service area.
Okay, thank you. I mean, the only ones, counsel, who could really object to that would be Treskers themselves, right?
Correct.
And that would serve them no purpose?
Correct.
They wouldn't get paid back, right?
Exactly.
Okay. Anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is ordinance 2024-1740, an ordinance abating the general obligation taxes levied for year 2024 to pay debt service on taxable general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 2022 of the Village of Peoria Heights. Trustee DeVore, ask for motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-1740.
Second.
All right, back to you, Trustee DeVore.
Same thing.
Okay, that's.
Ditto.
Did such a good job the first time.
Yeah.
Anything else from anyone? Madam Clerk?
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Ordinance 2024-1741, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement for the establishment and annual administration of Peoria Heights, Galena Road, TIFF District Number Four. Trustee DeVore, ask for a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-1741. Second.
Okay, go ahead, Trustee DeVore.
So this is just the, we have to pass this in order to create the TIFF District for the Galena Road area. So this is the first step. I know that Klein and Associates has already been working on kind of laying it out and establishing it, and this is us giving our approval to move forward for that.
Thank you. I think that sums it up. Anything else, Wayne?
Yeah, this is a contract with Jacobs and Klein and Economic Development Group for that work. I believe it's in the amount of about $34,000 total. And then there's a administrative, annual administrative fee, which typically comes out of our redevelopment agreements. So again, this work is typical of the other TIFF districts. This will be called TIFF Four, and you'll see, you know, the TIFF redevelopment plan, as well as maps defining the area as we proceed ahead with this.
But to clarify, the payment of the cost of the creation of the TIFF, that gets paid from the TIFF?
That's, that's not correct.
No.
The initial amount
Okay.
would be your responsibility of the village, have the general fund or another.
Professional services.
Yes.
Okay.
Is that, is that budgeted this year?
We do have some leeway within that line item. We'll have to adjust. If we, if we do go over, we'll make adjustments in other areas.
Okay. And this isn't to create the TIFF District. This is just to propose a plan to the village?
It is in effect to create, you know, it'll be a plan, but that ultimately, if everything goes according to plan, it will create the new TIFF.
So does the boundary come back for a vote before it's official?
Yes.
And it's not going to cover any residential areas? Or will this cover residential areas?
Well, it could. Yeah, I think it will, won't it, Wayne?
Yes. I mean, they, they did develop some maps previously, and I think from what I see now, it will, except that a lot of that area is industrial zone, so have to check how it's zoned, but I would say it's residential areas, yes.
If we include the residential, though, can't we use the, we can use the TIFF to do things like we're doing for these, this home grant?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't see how it cannot go through residential if the idea is to link them to another TIFF District so that they can move money around through the TIFFs.
Yeah, because they have to be contiguous.
Right.
So they, it's going to have to hit a residential area to do that.
We just need to make sure that when we do that, our wording is good to the public, because when that line item shows up, everyone thinks they got a tax increase. We ran into that a lot when we extended it to residential areas here on, what was it, Sciota? And everyone thought, because they had a new line item that now had a value, that the taxes have gone up, so.
Is that fee reimbursable? Like, I mean, if we are paying this now out of our budget and then can be reimbursed by the TIFF?
I'm not sure of that.
I'm all but certain that it absolutely can be reimbursed.
Okay, good.
There's no TIFF funds yet because it hasn't been created, but it is a reimbursable expense.
Okay.
It probably could be reimbursed by the BDD maybe as well?
Um, I, I, not certain on that, but I think it might be, yeah.
If the TIFF, if it's contiguous with one of the other TIFFs, though, that
You can borrow from the other TIFF, exactly.
The other TIFFs could pay for it, right?
Absolutely.
This may include another BDD, too, District.
Yeah, I think that has to.
So we decided how it's going to be contiguous, that route, yeah?
Well, that's probably for, that's for Klein to figure out and to do the study.
I think.
But that will come back for a vote.
I think a third of the cost goes to implementation, then a third goes to when it's finally voted?
Yeah, they have a, they have a cost, you know, when we pay them. Initially, it's a third upfront.
Right.
And then a third when we.
When they present it, and then a third when we pass it.
Correct.
According to the contract.
Yes.
So, so we're only liable right now for a third of the payment?
About $11,000.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Just for those in the audience and those watching from home, what we're doing here tonight, the board sees a great opportunity on Route 29 for future economic development, both residential and economic development in the state of Illinois. Soon, within the next couple of years, going to do a total remake of Route 29, make it a much safer road. And we think very strongly that it's going to foster future economic development in that corridor. There's another TIFF that's being created north of Gardner Lane by the city of Peoria that could create a lot of jobs. So we think the area is ripe for economic development, as I said, and with the parks we have there, I think it, I think now is the time to move forward on this. So congratulate the board on doing this. Madam Clerk?
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right. Next is ordinance 2024-1742, an ordinance authorizing the Village of Peoria Heights to borrow funds from the IE EPA Public Water Supply Loan Program for the purpose of financing replacement of lead service lines and rescinding ordinance 2023-1702. Trustee Reichert is absent tonight, so I'd ask for someone else to make that motion.
I make that motion.
Second.
All right, moved in second. Wayne, will you please take this?
So this, I think we had to rescind the other.
And that's part of the ordinance.
Right, so, so that was just a, another grant that didn't come through. So we rescinded this. This is a new one. We've been working on this for a while now, so this is through the state's revolving loan program. So a lot of contact with the state on our lead service lines and other aspects of our capital improvement projects. So the state has listed this project in their intended use plan in about the amounts $2,223,000, and that will be for just Phase One of lead service line replacement. So we planned on four separate phases if we need them, and all are funded in the intended use plan by the EPA. So because of our status, you know, as far as low-income folks, census tracts, things like that, we will be receiving what they call principal forgiveness on these loans. So basically, they're grants. Typically, they could be loans where we'd have to pay the principal back or pay interest on them, but in our case, they're, they're basically grants. So very happy about that. We've made a lot of strides and like to introduce Jackie McNamee. Jackie's with Woodard and Kern. She's a new face for us with Woodard and Kern. Thanks for, Jackie, for being up here. And again, thanks to Woodard and Kern for helping with all these grants. So basically, this authorizes that the village to proceed with this loan program for Phase One of the lead service line replacement.
So, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
What is included in Phase One?
It's, I think each phase is just designated by the amount of lead service lines we replace.
Okay.
So there's, there's some choice of where we start, and I think the Water Department will make, and Woodard and Kern will kind of get together and coordinate that based on needs and based on what we think may be the worst areas for this. So the contracts will includes, if we don't know what the service line is, there'll be some investigation done, so actually digging up portions of the line and determining what it is, and then immediately going into the replacement if it is led with, with a replacement service. So that's what the contract will involve.
So in other projects, Phase One is normally just the engineering and like investigation. We've already done that?
Well, I don't want to confuse, in this case, it's Phase One of
Actual replacement.
The year, this is Phase One, next year will be Phase Two, kind of thing.
Okay.
But it's the same type of work, replacing lead service lines.
Okay.
You may also know that the Biden administration has placed a goal to replace all lead service lines in the country in 10 years. So I think we're well ahead of that schedule.
Jackie, please come up to the podium if you would, so in case there are any questions for you. Trustee DeVore, go ahead.
Oh, that was, I did, that's all I wanted to know, just so that, that people know that that's what the difference is.
So when we started the process of the lead service lines, there was an inventory that was being done. Have all those homeowners been notified of if they have lead or not?
We're still, I think, in the process of that. So we're, we got a grant for that, $40,000 to lead service line inventory. We're still kind of in the process of that. In effect, it'll kind of roll right into this.
So have all the homeowners been notified yet that they need to be replaced?
I don't, I.
Trustee Weisenberg? So part of the process of the inventory is when we determine that it is a lead service line, we have a certain timeline to notify those homeowners, so that's part of the inventory process. The only ones who would not have been notified are ones that have not responded yet, and we have not identified yet.
But communication did go out, though.
So if we haven't heard from anybody, then likely we do not have lead service lines.
There are still some unidentified lines, and we will be identifying. That's part of the second phase of the inventorying process. So we're doing kind of two projects at once, inventorying and also replacing what we know.
Okay.
And then, I mean, the point is, there's a lot of coordination with the residents as we proceed ahead, you know, flyers, communication directly with contractors and Woodard and Kern folks, as well as city staff.
Anyone else? My recollection, Mr. Aldridge, is that we were going to try and prioritize areas where we knew young children were present. Is that still possible?
I think that's still possible, and we can do that, yes. We, we want to be as efficient as possible with how we, you know, designate these areas, so the contractor can just start here and kind of move right along. But I think there, there is good logic to that, and I think we'll be able to do that as well.
Could we get that data from the school district? How would we know if there's young children, if not the school district?
We will look into it and do everything we can.
Okay.
I think the Health Department might be able to, if there's been testing of high incidence of lead. But the school district, we'll, we'll figure that out, but that's a good question.
As far, so just so I'm, Director Aldrich, just so that I'm getting it right. So Phase One is 25%. Phase Two is 25%. Phase Three is 25%, and Phase Four is 25%.
Not, not exactly. Just the way things worked out, it's, Phase One is 222 service lines, so that's the biggest part, Phase One. Phase Two is, and other phases through Phase Four, 111 service lines, based on our estimates. We could complete early, you know, as well, and, you know, so we think these, that's a lot of, based on our initial inventory, we think that's, we'll probably complete early.
And getting ahead of the Biden administration's plan of, we're expecting this to be done annually?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Do we have that document? What is that document?
This, I created this.
Okay.
But it, it's basically says what's in the unified intended use plan.
Okay. Thank you.
So that's a published document.
Okay.
Anyone else? We're spending a lot of money here. This is a huge project. Jackie, the board knows quite a bit about Woodard and Kern, but for those in the audience and watching from home, would you tell us a little bit about your firm and why you're right for this project?
Sure. Woodard and Kern has been in business.
Would you pull the microphone, please, so the camera picks you up in the mic?
Yes. Woodard and Kern has been in business for over 40 years. We started in the Northeast. We moved to the Midwest about 14 years ago. We specialize with our fiscal solution team to help small municipalities reach these grants so they could replace important projects within their city infrastructure. So through this program, through IEPA, we were able to secure the grant. That grant helps offset the cost for the city. We've helped several cities throughout the United States improve their lead service lines. We've been active in the Illinois community. We've worked with several communities to clean up lead service problems. So it's a high priority for us. Water is the main focus of our firm, so everything we do revolves around water.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is Resolution 2024-17, a resolution authorizing a representative to sign loan documents for public water supply loan program. Trustee Reichert is absent, so I'd ask for someone to make a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved in second. Mr. Aldridge, back to you, please.
This is just that, it's just describes who with the village can sign the documents. My understanding.
Correct.
Discussion?
Correct.
Questions? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is Resolution Next is Resolution 2024-18, a resolution of the Village of Peoria Heights accepting a proposal from Woodard and Kern for the design and construction services for 2025 lead service line replacement. I'd ask for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Aldridge.
This is the actual contract with Woodard and Kern for $243,000 to do the Phase One or the first year of the lead service line replacement. So this would include design services as well as construction services. And for me, design is, it's hard, but it's not as hard as the construction services. So we really need folks with Woodard and Kern, working with city staff and the residents to be there. We call them resident engineers in the profession to be there, managing the contractor, helping us with communications, things like this. So again, this just is work, engineering services for the first phase of lead service line replacement.
Questions? Hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Trustee DeBoer?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
That passes. Okay, next is under building maintenance. Trustee Gett, one item, approval of an exhaust system install in the amount of $53,595 by Hastings Air Energy Control Incorporated. Trustee Gett, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Back to you, Trustee Gett.
Okay, this is for the exhaust to be hooked up to our, in the fire base. There's three of them, and so we take the exhaust out, send it out so it doesn't come into the building. This is the $53,000. Perfectly, if I'm wrong, Chief, you said Senator Kaler had got us $50,000 of it.
Correct.
Through a grant?
Correct.
And so.
And this is the same exhaust system we discussed during the budget year last year through the Fire Department. I know this is, the board felt very strong about getting this done. We were able to use some grant money through Senator Kaler to get this done, so the cost of the village will be the $3,595.
It went from 120, I think we are budgeting, to 53.
It's like 250 or something.
No.
No, I think you're referring to something else. This was around that number. It might have been a little bit higher.
Right.
Possibly $75,000, I believe, but it came in much lower, but we were able to use this, this $50,000 from Senator Kaler.
Went from that to $3,595.
Yes, after the grant, so.
That's an easy vote.[1647.52]